Our agenda, first item is the police station screening sketch review. We received, the police station's already up, they were looking originally for a final as-built review and we asked what the status on the screening was, had it been installed because no one had seen it yet and so they haven't installed the fence yet but they are proposing to do two fences, I guess is what it is now. I got a couple of emails yesterday and today and it described that there were going to be a couple of fences but there wasn't a lot of detail. So I asked that we just get like a sketch, a better detail of what they're proposing and we'll do that at our next meeting. But generally it's to screen the properties to the north and the Bushy Drive area from the impoundment yard with a fence and barbed wire on the top and all that, so just to make it more reasonable for a residential area.
Yes.
Anyone have any thoughts or questions on that?
Does that, would that have been this, this happened at last meeting, so would it happen at this meeting or?
No, that was, they were going to get it to me but they just got me some stuff today that was not clear.
Okay, so yes, I'm all in.
So we're just, we'll give them another couple of weeks.
Guess they were confused.
Is that something which should have been done by now, the pencil?
I would've thought it was already, it would've been installed because it was one of our conditions of approval back in two years, almost two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yeah, when we signed the approval.
Good God.
Then at some point they changed their mind about it.
Nice.
That's simplifying it.
I don't know, it was, we at the, at our hearing, we decided that we wanted to comply, we wanted it to comply with the zoning. They had not planned on it meeting that zoning standard, they didn't go for a variance, so they needed to comply with the standard, so they said, well while we're doing the work, we'll add that in. So they said they were going to do it and then it came to being, okay, we're all done and we reminded them that the fence still needed to be done and, because someone read the actual approval letter and it was good, it was a mark, I think, we read the approval letter and it said something about a, not, well, I didn't say right, I said read. So, we picked it up, asked them about it and they said, yep, we plan on doing it, just hadn't gotten to it yet, we forgot all about it and now it's DPW guys that's now handling it.
Oh, they're going to put it in?
He, well, no, he just got it tossed to him, I think, last week or earlier this week. He's now working on it and he pulled out, he was quick, he was good, he got a sketch of, or he got a spec list of the BBS fence and sent it off to us, I think I forwarded it to everybody or he forwarded it to everybody, but it didn't say which one, there was like forty-five different options and different heights and all that, so I said, well, just pick one, looks like they're all nice fences, pick one, show me a plan of where it's going, how long it's going to be and how high it's going to be so that we don't put a six-foot fence in front of an eight-foot-high thing that we're trying to screen. So whatever we're trying to screen should be shorter than whatever the fence height is, just kind of common sense stuff and Butch is good, I think he's got it now and we should be okay.
And what happened with the copy of the plan?
We just got that today or tonight, whenever, so we now have a copy of the signed plans.
Did that have any information that was found about this?
No.
Okay, good.
No, it just had what we originally approved but we can use those plans to kind of figure out where we're going to put it so we can kind of see where the neighbors' houses are and, because what they gave us was a sketch of the building and the impoundment yard but with no neighbor orientation, so we can at least put the two together but I, I think that Butch will put the whole thing together for us and make it neat and clean so that we can look at it, say, yep, we all agree on this building.
Go.
Good?
Okay, I'm in, I'm all in to table that to the.
All right. Next on the agenda is the comprehensive master plan land use chapter update.
So, uh, there was a.
So, is this, when will be done before June?
No. It's not.
She's leaving on June 6th.
Yeah, so, um, we had a meeting last night of the townwide planning committee and the next chapter, chapters that they want to review are the open space and rec, the cultural and historic land use and zoning and financial strategies and they want to be ready by the end of May with a end of June possibly, public forum, possibly, um, so, no, I will not be there.
You can stay on that committee.
I don't think so.
No, I'm positive you can.
Now we need a planning board member.
You need a planning board member.
But she could stay on the committee anyways.
She could, there are openings, yes.
I could if I was living in town at the time, I would think. Um, yeah, there's two factors there, right?
Yes.
So.
Come on with your report.
Um, the, so here's the thing, what Chris had, when Chris was on the committee last year, Chris Olson, he had gone through the chapter and he had crossed some things out, red, I have two versions, red and blue lines. I honestly, I had read the whole thing a year ago when he was looking through it, I haven't had a chance to go through and see what he was crossing out, what he was, uh, reformatting, to be honest with you, so I don't know how many it's going to be.
Okay.
And, um, um, the other, oh, the other thing is, so after possibly these next four chapters were looked at, then there's the municipal facilities, facilities plan that hasn't been looked at yet and, um, then they want to be able to have, if there's any conflict between what people are saying within their chapters, be able to have committees come together to say, there's conflict and how do we resolve that conflict and then after that would be like an implementation plan and then the implementation plan, the question was, is that the responsibility of the planning board after that?
Implementation?
Yep.
Absolutely, no, no thanks at all.
So.
Well, but all we have, I mean, all these questions can be answered if you read the zoning bylaws that we have that explain what townwide planning committee is supposed to do. It says clearly in there what the townwide planning is supposed to do, I thought.
It did, it does, it does.
Maybe we do approve the plan.
We, well, we approve the master plan.
Yeah, if that's what implementation means then.
Master plan is different than what this is, this is not the master plan, this is a townwide plan.
A town, okay, because I know one of them, it's our responsibility to approve, but maybe that's as far as implementation would go.
Well, right, the implementation would be through the town administration.
Yeah, but is she trying to make this a master plan? I guess it's so confusing.
That's the thing, well, we've gone back and forth a whole bunch of times.
It's very confusing.
It's general bylaw, no, I was just thinking, it's similar, it's thirty-three, it's a general bylaw.
It's a general bylaw, so, that's the thing, so there's a couple, honestly, because I'm usually gone twelve hours a day and then after I do my usual thing, but maybe I sleep with my daughter at night, um, maybe she gets dinner, then I do work before I go to bed, like you, Mr. McNally who's sending emails at eleven PM at night, I'm awake with you.
Yeah, I know, I get responses from one member, that's good.
Um, I almost said to you last night, go to bed. Um, my time is just limited. So, that, this is like the difficulty of this whole committee and the chapter, it's, um, townwide planning committee, page fourteen.
Article five, okay.
I should've had this with me. Incorporate the plans into the comprehensive townwide plan, the townwide plan shall be presented to the town meeting for approval by the voters, the comprehensive townwide plan shall be reviewed and updated at least every five years.
Right, so this is, that's a separate thing, our master plan is like every twenty years, that's got all sorts of things that are required by the state.
Yeah, so this is the townwide plan.
Right, and that's the townwide planning committee is to encourage, assist and review long and short-term planning efforts by boards, committees and officials of the town and incorporate these plans into a comprehensive townwide plan, which is not the master plan.
Which is not the master plan and it doesn't say who then takes it over after that.
Right, well, shall encourage, assist and review planning efforts, committees and office officials, because it's, it's an appointed committee, they don't have the authority to tell the DPW that they need to do this, the selectmen are the ones that have to implement all this stuff.
Right.
So, it's not an implementation arm, it's a planning, like with the planning board, we make recommendations, we put it in the master plan, we do the, we assist whoever else, the housing, on the housing production plan, we assist with all these plans, but then the real action that occurs is the selectmen make decisions on what they plan on doing, like the open space and rec plan, we had made recommendations on certain things and then the selectmen decide what they want to implement and what they don't want to implement and that's where the, in the past, Charlie Greeno was the one that was the spearhead for all this stuff and he was the one that drafted all these bylaws or drafted this article, I think, and his whole thing was, we don't need to update the master plan every five years, we get a master plan, it gets all the information that we need and then we do the short-term planning for the three to five-year goal and that's where you start doing the implementation, the discussions between different boards of who's going to do what on which property in, in town, I mean, we've gone over this a bunch of times.
Yeah, I mean, I, as someone who was at that public hearing, I didn't hear a lot of planning, what I heard was things that already occurred.
Right, right, so I think what we need to do is try, try to pull this together, writing these things up and make that the townwide plan, it's fine, it seems like it's a lot more effort than I would put into a townwide plan, I would, I would keep the townwide plan as minimal and streamlined as possible.
Well, that's what they're trying to do, they're trying to streamline it, so this was, this was the old chapter and so Chris went through and crossed out a ton of things, it's just kind of going through, what did he cross out, what is he editing, that's, that's really it.
So I think that's, that's good, so that's making progress, but the idea that.
So the planning board does not.
We don't have to approve it, we, they can do whatever they want, submit it to the select board and say, this is what we want you to do.
Right.
And that's where the town, that's why the town administrator is the, uh, the chair of that committee.
Right.
According to the bylaw, so, all right, so we just need to kind of follow up, get these things reviewed and moved through.
Just get it done, yeah, get it done, yeah, so, um, that's the goal is the end of May, I don't know, for them to actually talk about what the chapters look like, to have the chapters done and then, um, that doesn't, I mean, there's four, three other, um, three other chapters that need to be completed by then as well, so I don't know if that's realistic or not, for everybody else as well and so.
Well, I know the open space one should fly because hopefully we'll get that done, it's, we've got the new open space and rec plan and that's just going to be.
Right, that gets completed, right, that's what they were saying.
Folded right into this, there's an executive summary that they can hopefully just take and maybe edit a little more.
Yeah, the cultural and historic needs to be done.
That's going to be, yeah.
And the financial strategies is being worked on now.
That would be nice to see, because that, it talks in there about having some capital, capital finance folks, people that say, okay, we only have whatever it is, so much money in the budget, these bonds are coming off so that we'll be able to do this much spending without increasing the taxes, but we need somebody looking at, are we increasing taxes? Because we just keep putting these projects through that increase people's taxes, which people at some point are just going to stand up and say, that's enough.
Right, right, I agree.
So that's what we're going to try to work on, so that's good.
So, it's a work in progress, what that is.
Do you know when it will be done?
Well, the, the whole thing to be done?
Yeah.
My guess, the whole thing, by the time that the committee's made, because then if there's a conflict, I, I'm thinking that if, if things were to, maybe the fall or next winter.
Okay.
That's my guess.
If they stick to it, if it doesn't dissolve.
If they stick to it, yeah.
But I'm not sure it's ever done, that's the issue, it says it's to be updated every year and then they're supposed to go to town meeting with, the summary, every three years, I think is what it said.
That's what it just said.
Yeah, so those, yeah, all right.
So that's where we're at.
Uh, review, the next on the agenda is the site plan review and zoning issues. We had a meeting of the permitting board chairs and we've kind of looked through, I think I have an updated one, I sent it out, we have an updated list of, we had that list of twenty-something items, at the meeting we kind of pulled out some of them, not all of them, um, there's a, still a batch that still needs to be reviewed, but the building inspector kind of focused on a batch that he was concerned with and I updated people, it's in, yes, you all have that spreadsheet, which is good, but basically what we're trying to do is, the building inspector is mostly going to be doing enforcement to enforce the zoning requirements as they are written, there was one, the old, um, top of the list, one eighty-four to one eighty-six West Boylston Street, the Frozone Salter School area, they're still not complete with their site plan review and the planning board is going to send that letter, it was a September letter that has been sent yet, so when is it going to get sent?
Let me send it to you to look at that thing I added about the sign.
Tonight.
And I'll send it, yeah, send it tonight.
Have you have it now?
Right, so.
I could even just share it on the internet.
Okay, well, I think we're, it's ready to go, it's just go, well, once we do one last pass, but we don't need to hold a meeting and it can go as soon as we get, okay.
So, were you the one who created this?
Yes.
Okay, well, because, oh, no, no, because these are, so down here are things to, to be worked on that.
Well, the ones that are in yellow are the ones that we talked about at the meeting, that the building inspector prioritized.
Okay.
The other ones that are on the list, this is based on, this is the list that we sent the building inspector last October and I think last July.
Yeah, it's been a while, it's been a while, but you did add on the ninety-two North Main Street.
Yes.
Ninety-four North Main Street, those concerns?
Yes.
I didn't know where he was at with that, obviously it's not a priority for him because he doesn't have to be awakened by it every night.
With the sign.
Yeah, sign, the brightness of the sign.
Which is this?
Ninety-two North Main.
Ninety-two North Main Street.
Yeah, no, I'm just, which one?
Yeah, it's down number nine, nineteen, so that was one, that was one of ours, so as we go down, so he's going to be doing enforcement, we talked about twenty-one Franklin Street, the liquor store, their site plan review is incomplete but we had signed off on that because all they need is a couple of trees and, uh, we signed off with a condition that they plant a couple of trees near their parking areas and that was in December or January, so they couldn't do the planting at the time, so I think they're all set.
Okay, they did give us the rest of that, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, they came through. And then we talked about Finder's Pub for quite a few times, question, what's going to get done, there are some safety issues with the parking, um, they're, they were thinking that it's probably not, the work is probably not going to get done because that was done in two thousand and five, the certificate of occupancy was issued, but we still haven't gotten our final as-bills or any follow-up on that, that they've done all the work that was proposed, so they're going to talk to town council and see if there's some way of putting an order on a deed that any future owners will need to do it.
Future owners have to do it at least?
That the conditions of, as a notice, because it does, it already continues, it's in, it's in the, uh, the town's records, but it's not on the deed, so if someone wants to buy that property.
Yeah, attachment to the deed.
Then they look it, look it up and it's on the deed and they should be aware of that there's some limitations.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
What, what was it done?
The parking in the back, he came in with a site plan review saying he wanted to open up the entryway, uh, change some drainage, and this is from memory, and then realign the parking in the back. When he started doing the work, he did the work in the front, added some parking off to the right where the now keeper's place is, but then he didn't want to change the parking in the back because he would lose a few spaces to meet the safety, the site requirements there, so he never did that and, and he never came back with the as-built plan and so it's just been noted every year since then, they go to get a liquor license.
There was something more severe, it was like the fire lane or something like that is, is in violation, it's not just that he didn't finish that work, there was something about the fire lane, there's parking all through the fire lanes, so it's like they can't get a, or something like that, yeah, there's something more.
Oh, okay, I thought there was a correction, so I don't remember all of it then, that's good. And so what we're trying to do is make a deed restriction if there's some.
You remember that?
I think, well, it comes up every year.
Comes up. Uh, mass materials research, this was fifteen-hundredth century drive back number nineteen, back in two thousand and two, they just never, at the time when they did the construction, they did a good job, they were following through, but they were in the middle of a move from wherever they were, they didn't have the money, like the two thousand or three thousand dollars to do the as-built plan and stuff and said they would do it when they had the money, well, we believed them and waited and now it's looking like it's never going to happen and they did the work, it's not really going anywhere, we can cut bait on that one and just let that go.
They did the work, they just didn't build the plan.
Right, everything was built, right, and VHB reviewed it and I think they were, they didn't have any issues with it, it was just that it cost, was going to cost them money that they didn't have after the move and we didn't want them to go out of business, they were fighting bankruptcy or doing something, there was some story that sounded good, yeah.
They're still around, so whatever, whatever happened worked.
Yeah, so.
Did you go to Big Cell or something, raise some money?
Sell some cookies.
Well, the Girl Scouts could be right next door to them pretty soon.
Down the road, that's right. Um, and the rest is enforcement and the question about, the question came up just to bring you guys up to date, the VFW, the parking of those RVs at the VFW.
Yeah, it was going with that.
The building inspector replied that those campers are not vehicles, because we said that when we were talking, you can only have one unregistered vehicle on a property and that's in the zoning, trouble is, he said campers are not vehicles, but campers require, they, don't they have a VIN number and they need, require a registration, I thought, so.
Yeah.
It's an unregistered vehicle, that's.
Campers meaning things that can't drive themselves?
Right.
Well, if they can't drive themselves, then it's like it's a trailer.
Yeah, non-motorized, but they're trailers and they still.
Tore around.
Yes, trailers.
But the claimant's is not vehicles.
Well, he, that's what he said and I questioned it and we'll see where it goes from there, but I think that's going to come back on the list, but it may not be a problem if we can address the site issues that are our next agenda item, but, um, does anyone else have any questions or comments about the enforcement stuff?
So, you're definitely enforcing all of those things, uh, there is talk of.
The trailer.
After certain years, they let it go.
Um, that never really came up, we talked, the only ones that we let go were, um, which was the old, old one?
Just the one from the top, the very first one, from two thousand, fifteen-hundredth century drive.
Fifteen hundred, yes, right.
That's the only one that we.
Right, that's the only one that we said, they did all the work, everything was okay, but it's been seventeen or whatever it is from two thousand and two and we weren't questioning any of the work, it was more just didn't get the paperwork done, but they were still on, they were still on a temporary CO though, which is interesting with these files, they have a temporary certificate of occupancy without a permit.
Even now?
For, yeah.
So temporary certificate of occupancy are seven, sixteen years?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how that all works, but that's the way it works. All right, any other questions? All right, um. Did we do, want to do forms now or do we?
Yeah, that's.
Do it later, okay, want to move to the Flag RV site plan review?
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Isaac Lance today, we're here with Mike Flag and Mike Hammer and it sounds like we're taking sort of a trip back in time, um, which falls right into this, we've done work with the Flags about sixteen years ago, fifteen, twelve, fifteen years ago and now I believe they need something from the town and it's unclear, I think, to them and to me, I've just sort of gotten into this again as to what they need, so we thought if we start here, um, we might look back a little bit, so if you can, find out what you need and where we can go from here so we can do whatever it is that, that needs to be done with the site, because one of the changes that I know of that maybe prompted some of this is that a couple of years ago they constructed a new building on the site.
Were you involved with that, like with this?
Uh, we staked it out, we did an as-built when it was done.
Oh, good.
So, you know, they had, they had already secured a building permit at that time, so we showed whatever they needed to do to secure a building permit had been done, they had a building and it was underway, so we know that, that the building located on the plan, we've done some update work, um, then it was my understanding there was some question over increase of parking spaces or units of product that is stored on the site?
There was some, every year they get a license from the select board and it says in there, I think, there's a hundred units, I don't, it's there.
Right, right, the fiction was, when they were approved, was RVs were motor homes, not trailers, so through the years they always thought it was just motor homes, but we have trailers here also, so the whole thing combined and as Doug will explain that, how we have it now is we have so many units there and everything functions well, so I'm sure Doug can explain that to you guys.
Yeah, they've got, we've, they've got two properties in here, one they're both owned by the Flags, the smaller property here was granted a permit by the board of selectmen for number of vehicles restricted to twenty-five, that's what it says on the permit, the larger property, a license has been issued to allow a hundred recreational vehicles on the premises, um, and I don't know if, if the planning board is looking to kick in site plan review.
That one, that was a whole separate other issue, it's just that when we reviewed it, it was, um, it's their permit, it's not our permit, so that, I thought if we got, did a site plan review, we could, because I know just from watching, I looked at a couple of the Google Maps things, you look at the little white squares of the units and it's way over a hundred and twenty, just from those pictures, so.
Right.
That's theirs, if they have a layout that shows that they can fit all these things there.
Yeah, Doug did that.
Then that, under the site plan review, you may be able to get the selectmen to increase the number for whatever, I'm not sure why they're limited in the first place, that was the permit that was separate from us.
Okay, it was a, the whole thing, motor home, trailer situation, it was approved for, you can have as many trailers you want, but limit it to a hundred motor homes, but.
On the, the permit for the larger property, they said, subject to zoning regulations and planning property prepared by and for Isaac Lance surveying and the, the permit here was in two thousand and five, they go back what we did, had done, and I'm guessing that this may be the plan they're referring to because we had done this in two thousand and five and at that time, I remember we'd come in for a number of things and one of the things that resulted from different reviews was sort of internal circulation on the site to make sure that there was some type of adequate fire lanes and proper circulation there, so back in two thousand and five.
That's that, that's the plan for my time?
This is from two thousand and five, yes, and we'd come and we had delineated the number of areas of RV parking spaces in the Flags and come out and painted a fire lane on the property there and this was the areas of where they had for, the RVs were parked and all these and they had some access ways and things, the edges of the parking lot. Um, I don't, we, I don't think anybody asked us to count up how many units there were, I don't have anything in our records, how many there were back at that time, but what we have is the areas where RVs were parked in, so it was a starting plan, I took that plan and in red what I have is, was the areas of parking lot and RV parking that was shown on our two thousand and five plan and I put it on with what we found the conditions today and.
With the new buildings, the conditions today with the new buildings, is that what you mean?
Yes, yes, yep, and so what we've done is the, in red was the area, the extent of RV parking back in two thousand and five and what we've got on here where we have the sort of line work for a number of RVs parked and this type of thing, shows where they all are on the given day that we were there, we paint, we counted nineteen over here, twenty-seven over here, six over here, but it's a very sort of elastic situation in that we can locate six RVs here today and five minutes later there's four there or they've been lucky enough to sell the large exotic motor home and that's gone and it's been replaced by two smaller units, so what, what we see here is that we've counted up at the, the days we were here is two hundred and one units that they had on site and there were thirty-nine of them on the smaller lot. And there were thirty-nine of them on the smaller lot and a hundred and sixty-two on the larger lot. But what we've shown is that in order to park that number of units, you can see that the edge of woods is still very much the same as it was. The edge of parking is still very much the same as it was.
Is that paved over there or is that sort of?
No. The pavement is in this area.
Is all the pavement or impervious area that would drain all about the same as it was?
Yes. But we'll get to Vinny's favorite topic in just a second. So what we've got is largely what was pavement in two thousand five is pavement in
Okay.
Two thousand eighteen. What was gravel in two thousand five is still gravel in two thousand eighteen. And you can see that they haven't gone and like cleared, i- if they had a hundred and twenty-five units years ago, now they get two hundred. They didn't come in and clear five acres of woodlands or encroach into the wetlands.
Just arrange it different or something.
They've just, you know.
Yeah.
My, my, my personal opinion is they probably had two hundred units years ago.
Sometime.
And why they have a license for a hundred and twenty-five, I don't.
Cause what I explained earlier, motor home trailer thing is exactly what it was.
So you can see it's, it's, again, we've got, you know, internal circulation that works with traffic. We've got sort of the blocks where the, the units are stored. They, they haven't encroached any. This red line here shows where their edge of parking was before and there's, but the, the wood line, tree line was back here, so they basically just gravel a little extra place there. The big change on the site is that the existing building used to be right in here. The old building that was in, and the pavement used to come up like this, down right along the building and then went straight over. The new building footprint is right in here and there's a paved area between the two buildings. So what we have is this spot here, which is now either a building or paved that was gravelled before. We've got about three thousand square feet increased in impervious area that was not there before. So there's, there's other smaller changes like over here in this lot. The old pavement used to go here, now they sort of put it in and put a landscaped island, so. In this area now there's about a thousand square feet of non, of what used to be impervious that now was not, so. We've gained about three thousand here, we've lost about a thousand there. But by and large, the areas for storage and parking of RVs is very consistent with what we found it to be back in two thousand five.
I think it is there. You want to sit down? They want to see it down, they want to see it on the TV.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's just, no, it's just the light, the light that's shining down on it.
Yeah. You want to sit down?
Okay.
Do you wanna show the lights out? Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, okay.
Oh, dim the light?
Oh, all right.
I'm not getting it.
Oh, so I was, I was shading the light.
Try those switches and see if you can turn off these.
Like Jesus, yours.
Yeah, that might work.
There's a, there's a cam light right there. I think that's the one that's lighting up the. Oh, there you go, that one.
Nope.
Let's turn everything else back on.
Yeah.
Does that sound directly on the paper now?
I'll go check if it is.
Okay.
So I, I guess to, to sum up, what we were interested in demonstrating is that we haven't done any big changes at all in, in increasing areas of usage on the site.
Can, this, this plan was a, an approved plan? I mean, the, the two thousand five?
I don't know if it was approved. There was things that we submitted when we were going through site plan and conservation and DCR back then. And I, I can't remember which of the boards had asked for it. And I tried to find, you know, in our records, copies of, of stamped plans and they, and I couldn't find that, so we were able to find in our computer file, plodded this out again, but that was the, the plan.
It was only when she, or was it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was it for that. We, we had done a whole array of site plan things and done through approval with VHB, I think was the consultant at the time. Done some, you know, things with the plan.
I think you were talking about, when you were building this building, you had to, you had a whole bunch of drainage problems, you had to re-dig up and, you know, do all that kind of stuff. Were, were you involved, or who was involved with the draining?
What do you mean, a whole bunch of drain? Well, no, we put the drain around so the water coming from the hill, we were able to run it off into the detention pond, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so it's under control, I think.
Yeah, all the water, we, yeah, we spent a lot of money to take care of that water that all drops on our land, yeah.
I mean, I, I think we're glad that that happened.
At the chair meeting that we had, this, this property was discussed and Bill Chase on Concom said that he still had a, it was, he approved certain things on the plan when you came in there with the smaller size and then with the bigger size, it changed some of the drainage. And so he said he needed to check some things out. He's tried to contact you or somebody.
Never heard him, never called, never.
Yeah, I've contacted, I haven't heard anything from him. Well, this was last week, he said that he tried to. I'll get you a call tomorrow. I haven't heard anything from him. I've seen him in town, said hi to him, he hasn't said anything, so.
What problem does he have? What problem does he have? Sorry to be, yeah, but what, what?
He said something about drainage.
Maybe he didn't, maybe he wants to see it planned.
And he's with conservation?
He's the chair of the Conservation Commission.
I think what came up with the last time you guys were in was to take advantage, you, you were talking about restriping your parking lot? And since you, you had all done, you'd done work and you had this drawing kind of done.
Yeah.
Take advantage of the fact that you could come in and say, here's our ASBIL with new striping and then it's an approved striping. You know, you don't have to come back. If you add spaces or something like that, it's on there, you know, and then you can, you can.
Well, we can't, we can't just take an ASBIL. I think the trigger that happened here was the construction of the building. A site plan review is required when you're increasing something by whatever the numbers are.
And they've seen.
Building inspector neglected it.
I totally agree.
It's the only reason we're back for the fourth time.
So that's, that's what triggered it. They should have done a site plan review. They're still in violation of the zoning right now, even though they got a building permit. So what we're trying to do is after the fact, the building is already up, drainage changes, whatever drainage was done. We wanted to get a plan of all that stuff that was pulled together. So we have a plan, you submit it as a site plan application. And then we just go through a process to let a butters comment on it, which they didn't have a chance before.
Are you serious?
I was trying to say.
That's the point, to get that.
This wasn't.
It's a public hearing.
You raised your hand. You said if I brought him in and I put this down, everything would be okay. You did. I got it on camera.
Yeah, I know, we should check it.
Yep, we're gonna check it.
But basically, a site plan review is what we're.
Now you're bringing up Bill Chase, I mean.
It was, and I thought we were talking about doing, no, but I thought we were talking about doing the same thing as what we did with Pinecroft.
No, you're not having, no. What's Pinecroft do with that?
They did sort of bridge, no review engineer.
Yeah, it wasn't reviewed by.
You said, bring Doug in and I'll approve it. Doug's right here in front of you. You said, bring him in. I said, bring him in.
Well, let's, we can look at, look at the thing and make sure, Doug, you can look at it and see what it says on that. Yeah, I'm sure it's, it's.
I all raised your right hand, so.
Yep.
We'll go back and we'll go over the minutes and go.
All right, this getting to a lawyer situation, or what? Is that what you're doing here?
Whatever you gotta do, I'd rather not, but. We're, I don't think we're that far off.
Far off from what? Doug's here.
You put the ASBIL in, you guys all agreed. What the heck is wrong with you?
Why do I gotta talk to him all the time? Yeah.
So I don't, I, it's.
It's just a.
No, you're, you're bringing up stuff that shouldn't.
The ASBIL or the layout, I mean, or whatever, I mean, site, site plan.
Is what you wanted, the site plan showing all the areas.
Site plan with the ASBIL, you're all set with it. All of you guys were all set with it.
I think we did bring up the fact that since it's all done, the site plan would be the same as the ASBIL because it's there.
Yeah, you would totally agree. You said, do whatever you want, draw it on, you come back, Mike, we're gonna approve it. I brought it back.
The approval is the board, I mean, I. I can't just say it's.
No, but you all.
Oh, my God.
So I, I guess my understanding at this point is that from the board, what you're looking for is that since the construction of the building should have triggered site plan approval before issuance of the building permit and yet it was and there's nothing.
We got a permit.
So you'd like to kind of file site plan with planning board now to sort of show what was done.
And then, well, it also clears the title. I mean, if, right now, if this were to be sold, it's in violation of zoning.
Because of your department.
Cause of your department. Your building inspector gave me a permit. I'm getting a lawyer, we'll see you later. This is ridiculous. Last meeting, cause I'll have you.
We're trying to correct that so that we.
Yeah, how many more thousands of dollars?
So that's why we wanna try to make it.
This is where we're at, the last meeting, this is what we had to do to correct it.
Right, exactly. Now I gotta do a whole site plan review, how much?
Like you want it and everything like that, with the striping, okay?
Well, the, the striping issues are there. There's like five striped spaces in front of the, the office here and the rest of it is well, as we were there was not striped because again, it's, it's very fluid. You can put two twenty-foot long units or your one forty.
All we were saying was, it doesn't matter what the land looks like right now, but if you wanted approval on a bunch of parking, put it on the drawing, get it approved now and then don't come, you don't have to come back.
No, last meeting, okay, let me talk. Getting very upset here. Last meeting. All you guys said, if Doug draws that on the drawing, we will approve it. Guaranteed, you said it, it was a hundred percent. I wouldn't have hired him and paid him thousands of dollars to do this and come back so you can say, oh, now you gotta get a site plan review now. Why would I do that? Wouldn't I go get a site plan review? Wouldn't that make sense?
What's the difference between what you did in a site?
Well, what are you looking for? What are you looking for here? Before I get too upset. What do you need? Huh?
Well, I was thinking that we were gonna do a site plan review. We were coming in, he, Doug was gonna, gonna look at a preliminary site plan review just to have the process followed. That's all.
Well, you screwed the process up. I got a permit.
I, I agree.
Then I coming back and I'm following everything here, now you gotta come another meeting? What do you think, I just come to these meetings for the fun of it?
Well, we talked last, whatever it was, last
Yeah.
June, July, and.
We said have an ASBIL, we'll approve it. I have it on camera. We will watch the camera.
Take a look and just check.
Can I watch it right now or is it?
So, so in the, in the site plan, it's part of it, you were asking about the Conservation Commission or whatever it was, that the applicant shall submit material that may be required to ensure the proposed development does not pollute surface or groundwater, cause soil erosion, so maybe that's what that gentleman, I'm forgetting his name.
Bill Chase.
Bill Chase was concerned about. I don't know, maybe he just wanted to see the approval of that.
He was, he was already approved with it.
Yeah, he said everything was great.
Yeah, so he already said that was green.
He says, you're good, I'm happy, everything looks positive.
So maybe he needs to put something in writing about that. And then the other part is landscaping within the setbacks, which it looks like you've done. Driveways and curb cuts, part of that plan. Service roads, connection of parking lots, shared parking, parking and loading areas, parking area landscaping.
It's in with ten years, isn't it, like?
Interior walkways and pedestrian paths.
Site plan within ten years, it's legal or whatever the.
Stormwater management.
Isn't that what it was?
Yeah, so within ten years.
Ten years, so.
Yeah, but the, the only thing we're talking about is that is because the building, yeah.
Yeah, all you needed was the building drawn. Doug drew it on, he came over, spent thousands, now you're saying I need to go back. Do, what do I gotta do now?
I don't think you're gonna do anything if this is done.
Well, no, don't say that.
Well, he's saying, he just said you don't have to do anything.
No, no, we have to do, we have to have our meeting.
But he says we don't do anything, but not, we don't know that we need any more intricate plans. What we just need to do is follow the process. And you can try to review it, see if it's reasonable, explain it. If you think it's reasonable, then that's fine. If not, then we just let it sit and let the property sit. We're not gonna, we're not jumping up and down. It's been, what, two, three years since the construction has been done. And we're not jumping on the building inspector saying you need to enforce this, give them a fine or whatever the fines can be.
Yeah, I mean, you got, I got a permit, I can.
And we don't.
That's, oh my God.
Oh, no, I agree.
So what we're trying to do is just try to make.
People, just approve it. Let's just move on, next subject.
Let's go.
Let's go.
Well, that's, we can't just do that.
You did at the last, what do you think when I was here last night?
We can't approve anything. We don't even have an application to approve.
Well, let's get one.
Well, that's what we said at the last meeting, so.
Well, that, that's like I said, I wasn't part of the last conversation, so our.
That's why it's good to.
I'm sorry, I do get you. I'm sorry, I apologize.
I think we're this close to being.
I don't know.
Okay, just one, one at a time. But that's. Do you have an idea of what it is that's going on?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. The board is looking for, for us to file site plan and application and we'd do your butter, you know, notification and have public hearing. And, and really show pretty much what we have.
Yeah, I think this is, whatever, ninety-nine percent there, add the lines that we sign on and I think we're.
There are a few lines there. And then when you submit it, you can ask for specific waivers. And one of the things we had talked about was waiving fees because
Yeah.
From our last meeting, we didn't wanna be charging them anymore.
Engineering review, traffic.
We don't wanna be doing that anymore, it's already up.
They don't make you have to send us out to VHB for.
Correct.
We know what.
No, we don't wanna do that. So if you look through, I, I mean, I think that there are waivers that you can ask for. Does it really need to go through each of the, every board?
I don't think there's anything that we're concerned about as far as waivers.
No.
Didn't recall anything special?
No, I don't. I mean, it's waivers for the process. I mean, you're not really waiving anything else. You're meeting all of the other zoning requirements. And that's why I think it's clo, it's, it's right there. It's just that, that's how we can approve it. We have no other way of saying everything's okay without having something to act on.
Well, if you did that, it has to be a public hearing, so.
Cause that's what, that's what we approve.
Are we waiving the application fee?
Yeah, we were waiving the, yeah, we, we didn't wanna charge them any more money.
Cause they're gonna do the notifications, so we're just paying.
Yeah, how many, how many butters from you there? Not too many, right?
You never know, but.
Just made in charge, that's all. So you are, you get no, no application fee. Come in with this same plan.
Is the golf course all over there? I mean, is that one of the butters?
But there is. Yeah, there's, there's a quarter of them.
And they're probably gonna show. I mean, that's just the way it is, but.
I don't know, they might not show for this.
It does, but there, if it's a public hearing, they're allowed to show.
Oh, they're allowed to show, something like that. The building's already up, what do I care?
But it's already been done.
It's already been done.
It's done and it's.
They're gonna show and they're gonna say there's no, no changes really from what you see now. And I don't know, I don't know where they're gonna go from there. But if this.
I mean, first time.
First time, I don't think we're doing more than one here.
I don't see that, I don't see that as being a continued. It's just getting it all done. We get it, we close it. We then make sure everything's buttoned up and.
Considered.
That's it. The only thing that would be the outstanding one would be get something from Bill Chase.
I'll call him tomorrow, get that wrapped up.
That's just a note.
Don't need to.
Yeah.
Just someplace to sign.
And then it would be the date, just getting it on our books.
And we have to be in a month to get the two and four week.
Right, right. So we.
And then what about, like the police and fire stuff and all that kind of?
Well, that's what I was wondering about.
The departments, I mean, they've all seen it, cause it's there.
Yeah, the fire team's already come and looked at it.
Yeah, just looked at it. But a lot of times, but we send it and we just ask for them to give us feedback.
That's part of the process, just end the same, yeah, we're happy with the whole thing.
The mayor may not respond.
So it's not, that's what I wanna know, is if they've seen it and been involved.
They go hard for the process with the building and the building permit.
I mean, and, and then, and that's the process. You send it to the departments, they say they like it or don't like it. You send, you, you have the public hearing, people say, they ask questions, whatever happens there. Probably nothing's gonna change because it's all there already. And then that's all there is, since there's no more review.
And right now, I mean, for your benefit, you may wanna check with the selectmen and see if they can change their permit and tie it to this site plan review. Based on the site plan review, that permit now can, there's no limit on the number of vehicles as long as they're not within the zoning setbacks.
Although licenses usually aren't really tied to a site plan, but. I mean, I, I don't want it to be part of the site plan either, just so that it's hard to change.
Well, I'm just thinking you go into the process, you might as well get that benefit so that
Yeah.
all stops and you can put whatever you need here.
This, you know, the, the thing with the parking and the units, it's a little unusual. If you were a drugstore, you have so many spaces or office building, you have that. You know, here, here we don't have a nine by eighteen foot space that, that things fit into, so the, like I said, the, the unit parking.
The only reason that came up is because you were, somebody was asking about repainting the driveway.
Repaving.
Repaving and then, and then painting the, the things back on. And all we were saying was.
Well, can you pave what you can?
If you've already got it, if you're copying the striping, do it.
Yeah, you need to increase that.
But if you wanted to add spaces at them now and just be done with it.
And then just calculate what you need for parking. We've got pretty minimal parking requirements. And just show that you have the parking not where the RVs are parked, so that you have both space for the
Yep.
clients as well as the product.
I mean, you do have space for them, I mean, that's not, not the problem.
Yeah, we got parking spots.
You know, I think with. It's just, you know, I think with the construction of your building and you had some new paving around the building, you hadn't striped any spaces.
Well, we haven't done it just because we haven't been approved or whatever. We don't wanna, we're trying to-
Well, right, we need to see what to approve.
Here, make sure everything goes right, but, you know, you do something and they say, "Well, you can't do that," you know?
Yeah, no, but now, I mean, if, if you're kinda going through a, a real, full-on site plan review, is what we're gonna call it, put the changes in that you want.
Ask for, ask for whatever you want.
Go for that.
Even if you're not gonna do it now, put, like, put the spaces on, even if you're not gonna paint them on now, because then you don't have to come back when you do wanna paint them on, you know? You just say, "No, they were approved whenever, ten years ago. Now I'm painting them."
The only thing with the coming back, we get the site plan approved, then we approve it. Get, appeal period goes on, then you can come back the next week and say, "Oh, we're all done. Can we have the as-built certificate?" We issue that, and that's done. So that's the whole part. It's not, come in for a public hearing and you're all done. It's public hearing and then follow-up.
And then the, yeah, usually there's building.
The building inspector may say, or actually he won't, but the fire department may say, "We need another line over here," or something else. But we just need a process to follow.
Sure. Well, we can discuss that.
Yeah, you can draw some-
I will discuss it with you gentlemen. I, I have an idea of what you're looking for, and we can talk about what you want to do. Then we may be back.
Good. I mean, we're not, I mean, I don't think you're that much more work to do. I just think you're gonna-
Don't say that. You just don't give them the wrong impression.
Well, it's really the process.
It's, it's the process. It's not a long process. It's not a hard process.
Well, and, and we're somewhat abridging it. I mean, because it's done. We're saying that-
And there was an error on the town's part, and we totally agree with that, so we're not pushing hard.
But, but I think in the long run, if you, if you get the site plan review done like this, in the long run, that's gonna be better for you, because now this is your starting point-
Right.
From any future changes, you know? We're selling the property, "This is what it is. Yep, that's what it is, go." Or, "We're changing it again. Okay, what are you doing? Well, we're just adding this over here. Oh, okay." You know, I mean, it's, it's easier from here on out.
All right.
Okay.
Any questions? Any other comments?
I think we know where, what the, the starting and close to the ending point would be. You just need the vehicle to get to.
Thank you very much.
And we'll discuss it.
Some more?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you for your time. George?
You're pleasant to me.
Sets, how many sets of plans do we have?
Do you want a date for it?
Um, not yet.
Not yet, okay.
We usually give that out when the application turns up, but-
Second and fourth.
We know how to get it.
Yes.
Thank you for coming in again. I'm sorry that it's not signed tonight, but I'm making this part of it. You let it go six times. As nice as that?
Hey, I'm gonna get him. You let him know.
I will. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Good night.
I mean, they already had the drawing done?
Flag.
He is my flag.
I thought you-
And the other guy's-
I forget what the other's last name was.
No, no, they signed in.
They should have signed in.
Yeah. That sounds right, but I don't know. Okay, all right. All right. Briarwood Community, we got a site plan review submittal for Briarwood. Say. Come on down.
Oh, Briarwood.
Oh, we should've had you do this before, so they could see what a site plan and application looks like.
So I'm just here to answer any questions.
And you are?
I'm John Gelsworth, Bill Thomas.
Okay. And you submitted the packet prior with everything else? Do we have, we have everything? So this one, it's an amended site plan review, right?
Amended site plan, special permit, and stone water-
Stone water permit.
It's all three in one.
Briarwood is a project that was approved, what, year, two thousand and two maybe, or no, ninety-eight? It was before I was on the planning board. They gave first approval for the whole plan.
That's a long time ago.
And they've been doing phases? This is the last phase.
I remember, because they had come here before.
Yes, yeah, they came a year ago.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I recall.
So that's, we're following through on what, what we said. We were looking for, they submitted the package. And so we have this, we have that. Did you send it all to VHB electronically?
No, we haven't. We were waiting for contact.
You just gave me something, huh?
Yes, I did. I just, that's all their information.
That's all yours. And that's the notice advertised?
Was that all right, that notice? That wasn't what you're about to write?
Yeah, there was a couple of little things, but no big deal. That's good.
Tell me which ones they were as well.
Yeah, no, it looks good.
So this is what we should post in the newspaper and send to the butters?
Yep. And there was a question on which butters? Did you, got that squared away?
We did, yeah. We ended up going with all of them.
Oh, really?
Just because how it is with Worcester and West Boylston, Worcester doesn't take another property from West Boylston to base their butters. They have to take property in Worcester, so that kind of sets the three hundred feet from that edge, which captured a condo association, so.
I know what you're trying to talk about.
So for the notice of intent, we've already notified the butters, and we had to do the same thing for, for that, so.
Okay. Check is here. We're good with those numbers?
Well, that's why I was a question, I think we have a chance to look it up if we have that one.
It's made out to Melanie?
Two checks. Um, fees.
Let's give it practice.
So one should be the application fee and-
Under all the same amount, weren't they?
Yeah, they're both eight hundred, so.
One should be six hundred.
Mine is six hundred. I thought six hundred.
Oh, six hundred and eight hundred.
It's his eyes.
Oh, it's amended, right. All right, so amended, yeah, six hundred and eight hundred. I would plan on, more on the review fees, sorry. This is, he's under the subdivision for an amended site plan, I'm sorry, an amended site plan review. So that's it. It's eight hundred and six hundred. So we're good? I would plan for about two thousand on, and that's what we'll kinda set for VHB before they notify us if they're close.
Total or two thousand additional?
Additional. Twenty-eight hundred, twenty-one, eight hundred. Total. Because that's usually two reviews. Because they're looking at everything on this one. All right, and I think that was it. Any, nothing else? No other questions? Great.
No, their initial presentation, when they, when you first came in, I think you explained exactly everything that was going on, all the-
So, yeah, I don't think it's changed at all from that.
Perfect.
Did you include something on the open space, getting the twenty-five percent?
I believe that was to be discussed, either at the hearing or as a condition.
And all the affordable units, which we couldn't figure out how to make affordable?
Well, we, I thought, the affordable ones, we were gonna let that fly, I thought.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a way to make them affordable.
Right, right.
Right, that was the conclusion.
And that, well, and this predates that, so we're okay with that. But we were gonna get the twenty-five percent open space, I thought, and that's-
I'll talk to them. I wasn't involved in all that, so, yeah.
Yep, yep. So, I'd rather, you get a month now before the hearing, so let's make sure it's one way or the other. All right, great. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have, any citizen comments? Nothing?
What are our only spectators here for tonight?
Our spectators are just seeing-
You should tell all your friends and we should get better ratings. Mark Freedom.
They want on the planning board.
And we have a-
Who want to be on the planning board?
We have a handout for you, if you wanna come up. You can come up now.
You want to get a handout?
Yes.
You're not actually supposed to do that here.
I'm not?
No.
It's a blank, fine.
You're not supposed to do it here.
You want a handout?
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So, we have, the last item on our agenda is a review of the planning board application forms. We started looking at those. What do we?
Oh, there was a table.
Me? I sent you some of the-
You did, you did a really good job. We gotta go in electronic, I think?
Yeah. Those are all, you know, the application, I did like three or four of them. I sent it to you.
Yep, forms A, B, C, and S, I think.
Yeah, so those, those forms looks good, if you want to, if you want to edit all the those, yes. I can do the other forms with the same, yeah.
Yeah, the form S is the one for site plan review, which is our biggest, right, from, right?
So I can do that.
Great.
Are these, are they new forms? The updated forms?
No, they're not updated one by one.
No, there's a-
Don't admit it.
Kind of updated.
Yeah, just updating them.
Oh, right. So, you're in a format, we're gonna try to go, we're trying to make it, say, we're trying to make it electronic?
Uh, rewritable PDA.
Rewritable, so that, so they go online, they can fill it in online?
Fill it in and then they can-
Can you file it online?
No. I don't think so. The town, uh-
They're gonna email it in.
Yeah, email it, yeah. Email it.
Good.
But not, we cannot, I don't know whether, we can talk to Karen and-
Yeah, we better talk to her soon, right?
Why?
I like that.
Yeah.
Karen Correia?
Yeah.
I think she's, her contract is up in Ju, in June.
And she's not renewing, like Cheryl?
Her contract is up, so I don't know.
That was mentioned at today's staff meeting.
Oh, really?
How sad they're gonna be that I'm gone?
Yes.
She's not gonna come to see smiling faces.
It wasn't the party?
There's gonna be some training, because some of the things that Karen died, was doing, now it's gonna be responsibilities of the health.
Board, right?
What? Like what?
Some of the-
No, no, no.
Yeah, there's a lot of back stuff that she was doing behind the scenes. She did a lot for the town.
For her? Like getting everything filed?
No, she's, she's doing it. We, we actually do pretty well, but there's a lot of other things that were going on with the-
We are deviating to the planning board.
My last night, I'll bring baked goods and shots.
All right, let's not go there. Let's-
You need to get a-
So, we're gonna forward those forms before our next meeting. I'm gonna go through them and work with Raj and hopefully get some off to you guys.
So they don't look anything like the things we have right now?
Well, they will be similar. They're just, yes, they're gonna be electronic with the new-
Format.
Letterhead on the top. It might be multiple pages, but it's gonna be electronic.
Okay. Rewritable PDA.
And, uh, did, are we updating, let's see, there was some fee issues on?
Yeah, those things, you know, we can always edit, once we have the forms.
The fees on the forms, you mean?
Yeah, once we have the forms-
Actually, are they on the forms or are they in the, by the?
We always refer to the fee schedule.
Fee schedule.
Because that way we just change the fee schedule. We don't have to change all the different forms.
Okay. And then, was there something here about a three-and-a-half inch floppy disk that we can take out? Yeah. Any computer-generated information of the lot on a three-and-a-half inch computer disk format set by the planning board? Can we take that off? Why? It's number one, the bottom one, there.
That's pretty funny.
Come on, what's wrong with that?
We can change it to punch cards.
Exactly. Maybe it has to be in calligraphy.
Get rid of that.
That was cutting edge at the time we wrote those. Nineteen ninety, ninety-one, I think. So we'll get rid of floppy disks.
Submitted through AOL.
AOL.
We're not even gonna say, it would computer format, acceptable to the planning board.
A computer format.
Just digital format, e, e-mailable digital format or something like that? Leave it at that?
When you get your draft, you can make those comments.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, get the draft and you can, unless you want to do that.
Sure.
Still waiting for the letter.
It's coming, it's coming now.
It's not in the right format now.
All right. So we're good with the review of the application forms? Any reports from other boards? We got the townwide planning committee report. Any others?
Oh, no, we did CMRPC.
Yeah, you can talk about that.
Nothing to say from transportation. The meeting got canceled last month, and it's not happening again until next Thursday, week from tomorrow.
It's a good thing he's here, too.
But I did see a message come by-
What's that?
I did see a message come by about the upcoming paving of the one forty and twelve intersection. I look for it on my phone, but it's been already filed away. I have all these rules, so, yeah. So I can't get to my subfolders from my phone. But that's happening, and you were very sharp-eyed to see the white markings on the road.
Right. So we're, there's some work going on at the twelve and one forty intersection?
You mean right in front of the honey farm?
Yeah, it's milling and paving. It's not any change to the intersection intersection.
Oh, they're not doing any line work, maybe, or?
Lines?
Right by honey farms?
I mean, they have to re-
I hope it's at night.
As far as I know, it's gonna be, it'll be the same, only better, but-
Because someday we're gonna get the study from CMRPC of-
Someday.
How to do that?
We talked to him last meeting.
Oh, you did?
It's coming up.
Oh, good, so it's-
We did?
Is there any progress? So let's move from that to our CMRPC meeting.
And then they do have CP, the community presentation as well.
It's going to be, Route twelve and one forty is milled and paved.
Well, that's good, because there's-
Because of all that washboard and the waves.
Nothing else. Milled and paved.
Well, they have to stripe it again, then. I mean, they at least have to put the stripes that were there back.
Right, but they're not, they're not gonna change the curb.
The lanes or the curb.
They're gonna keep everything as it is and just-
And where, how, where are they gonna stop? I mean, are they just going back to like the church?
If you look at the, well, I, I saw the lines coming in from Clinton, so it goes up.
Oh, they're going far?
Well, no.
No, it goes back to the stop, with the stop lines, and then I think there's like four cars. Four, five car lines.
It wasn't, it wasn't that far back from the intersection that I noticed the lines. It's probably the same on the other roads also.
It was the same, it's the same area.
Just basically in the intersection, not much of the road.
Right, not, not the road pass there, just the, just basically the intersection.
Right, good.
Anything else from CMRPC?
Yes. Thrilling news.
Oh, yeah?
Well, the, there was two presentations. One was, uh, they mentioned Chris Rutro by name almost.
Tim Murray.
I think he's asleep. No, um, uh.
Tim Murray gave a talk on economic development.
And there's a.
So they are, they are going to do.
I don't even know what they're gonna do. It's completely.
Send in an application.
Focus.
Send in an application and getting all the towns feedback, all the forty communities. CMRPC is working on it. So once we have that, what, what do we need here? What kind of economic development needs in this area, that area, that area? So they will come by, com- compile and they try to get some money.
Okay.
That money they want to distribute to everyone, so, towards the economic development. So for that, they said, you know, we need to take each and every town or the communities, like a planning board, select board and other boards.
Economic development.
Yeah, they could, they could, uh, so they could get the survey, survey in. I do have the survey link, maybe I'll.
Oh, it's, it's a survey.
Survey link, yeah. So, you know, we can say, you know, oh, I need a Walmart here, so I need a.
Done, check.
I need, uh, what is that Trader Joe's in town?
Trader Joe's, right.
Trader Joe's in town, Whole Foods in town.
Yeah.
So, so those are all the things, you know, they are looking for.
Yeah.
So based on that, they will be writing.
You have to stay.
They will be, they will be writing that project. They will be submitting that for the grants, so we may be getting it.
Yeah, it sounded like more to the point is they've got a grant to do this survey? And I don't know what's gonna happen after that, except they want us to do the survey. So that, that's what I got out of the whole Tim Murray thing, but apparently they'll, they're moving on.
You know, it's, it doesn't cost you anything, so just do the survey.
But there's no guarantee that they're gonna get any of the grants to help out.
They will, yeah, they will get it. Yes, they will get some money.
So.
So CMRPC is involved in this.
So they're involved. Oh, so it's not CMR?
And also the.
Tim Murray, what is Tim Murray?
Tim Murray is the Worcester Chamber of Commerce.
So is the Chamber of Commerce doing the survey?
They got the grant to do the survey.
Oh, okay, so it's, okay.
Yeah. He gave a talk.
Are they considering all the work that was done by all the towns that did like the Central thirteen comments? We did that back five years ago and did exactly the same thing with CMRPC, all the old regional plans. Just take those same items that were open space needs, development needs, housing needs, and there was one other need. They made a whole list. They've got a whole document called the Central thirteen.
Did not sound like that when they were talking.
Maybe you can send it to Janice tomorrow morning, some email.
I haven't gotten a survey. I haven't been requested to fill out a survey.
I will send it to you.
Look at the, Tim Murray's website there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I must've missed it the last time I was looking at that.
Yeah, you go back to where you were on your bookmark to Tim Murray's website.
And, uh, yeah, the second topic was on, uh.
Oh, that was the bus, WRTA.
Church, Jonathan Church gave a talk.
Oh, okay.
So he is, the governor is cutting a lot of funds, the.
No, he's level funding.
Level funding.
And they're, they need to straighten out their budget. This church.
Regional Transit Authority?
Yeah.
So we are not affected. West Boylston is not affected.
He talked about all the routes. Yeah, the one, the West Boylston bus is still going.
Did we ask to get that bus route extended down to the folks, the affordable housing at ninety-two North Main?
No.
No.
So they want to, they want to.
They wanted to get their budget under control, not more out of control.
A loop around the last bit of the reservoir there and come back.
I'm gonna ask. No, I did not ask.
So there are a lot of routes will be eliminated. Some of the routes, you know, if they go for four, four times, they cut it to two. So two bus, one bus, like.
Or cutting out the weekends and all sorts of stuff like that. I mean, they had a whole bunch of proposals on how to make it work.
Make a million dollar budget.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good.
But, but generally the, the answer to the, to our question, West Boylston, is none of the West Boylston routes are under consideration for being cut.
The West Boylston route.
The, well, the route and the Elder Bus Service.
Oh, really? Oh, that's right. Is there now Elder Bus? Okay, that's good. That's good. All right.
Okay. The.
Excellent, and then you had CPC.
Oh, and it was at their new building. They moved into their new place. That's it.
Oh, where do you, that's downtown, right?
Onam Building.
Which is like Fort Knox.
Okay, I got to, I got to tell you on that too.
You worked there?
Onam Buildings.
Where were they?
Onam Buildings.
Union Station.
Uh, let's keep one, one.
You need to get a film, you need to call them, make an appointment, so that they will send the, your name and other things to the front desk. Then only you can get in. If not, you have to go to the front desk and to call somebody from the CMRPC. They will come and get you. So this is that kind of security because it's of the insurance.
Oh.
The tenants are insurance, so.
Really?
You cannot walk in.
They let Mark in?
Right, and they let, actually, they knew my name when I walked in.
Oh, good.
They did.
They probably heard about.
The facial recognition thing, like clicked right on. But it was funny, I, I walked in, we're in the meeting, and I said, the security here is the opposite of what it used to be. You know, it was at Union Station. You could wander in, wander through their office, do whatever you wanted to do.
Oh, yeah.
And now you can't even get in the building.
Wow, okay. Excellent. All right.
Give me, yeah, community administration action, Mark, right here.
CPC?
Uh, CPC.
It would, the application from affordable housing?
And they approved it?
They did.
Yeah?
Okay, good. I, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they approved an application for affordable housing for basically, it was explained that it would be like a percentage down. I suppose, like an incentive for a developer.
It's our cut of the project to build senior housing.
Yeah.
What, a percentage down?
Like, you know, like, I don't know, maybe it was thirty thousand?
Yeah, you, they, they're asking to go to town meeting to get two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
I don't know what the amount exactly.
But as an incentive for a, um, developer to come and have some bits and, and the, there, so the end result is there'd be more housing in that area of Maple Street, but also they would be able to offer more affordable housing in the town.
For the senior.
For the senior housing.
Right, that's what they'd be building, a senior housing there. And it's like, yeah, of a two million dollar project, we would, we would have ten percent. We would have our two hundred thousand that we're contributing and then the developer has to make it work for taking in the rents, getting subsidies, whatever they can get to make the, to get the rest of it. And there's contractors that do this, but if you were to ask a contractor to do this with no town investment, they don't, they generally don't think you're serious about it then.
So it was approved?
Is Lemmister, cause Lemmister is now our housing person. They're on board with all this? They understand now?
Yeah, um, Pat went to their next meeting, the, the housing authorities meeting, and got their endorsement or whatever, you know. Told them what's going on and they said, yes, we support this, cause really it's kind of their project.
I was gonna say, it's, cause it.
We're, we're sort of running the project, but they're the authority, you know, in town.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's good.
Good thing.
And, but still gotta go to town meeting, right? So town meeting voters have to, and this is money that voters have already paid, cause it's in the CPC.
It's already in the CPC.
Or CBA money.
It's already in the CDC.
And, and the, the difference now between what we usually ask for is this is money not just in the housing part, but it's also in, a little bit in the general part.
So how much is in the housing and how much is?
It's about a half and half, I think. Maybe a little, a little under half and half. Like we have ninety and we're asking for a hundred and ten from.
But the housing, the housing part is, you're all buying into it?
Yeah.
So you're not saying ten thousand from the housing part and.
Well, we are keeping some in the housing part, cause we need some for the, um, our, what do we call consultants.
Yes, yeah, that's.
To spend in all of, all of the money.
But you're buying in with that. Okay, good. Good?
Yeah, it's good. Everybody.
It's good, it's good. We were, we didn't know how it would go, so we were, we were wondering.
Yeah, all right, that sounds good. So our next agenda item is.
Minutes.